Aubrey, are you ready? Okay, notice is hereby given of a regular meeting of the City of Friendswood Planning and Zoning Commission to be held Thursday, August 26, 2021, beginning at approximately 7:00 PM in the council chambers at City Hall located at 910 South Friendswood Drive, Friendswood, Texas. The Planning and Zoning Commission's regular meeting is called to order at 7:02 PM. We will now receive any communication from the public or committee liaisons to the Commission. To comply with provisions of the Open Meetings Act, the Commission may not deliberate on subjects discussed under this agenda item. However, the Commission may direct such subjects to be placed on a later regular Commission agenda for discussion and/or possible action. Please note that public comments will be limited to a maximum of five minutes per person. And Becky Bennett, again to my right, will be our timekeeper. Located on the podium, there are several sets of lights. A yellow light located on the podium will come on indicating that you have one minute to wrap up, and then a red light will come on when your time has expired. Also, out of respect for those speaking during this public comment period, please refrain from any outbursts or interruptions which could disrupt the meeting and discourage others from speaking. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak at this time? Okay, seeing no one. Next is the Commissioner's public hearing, where we will receive comments, both oral and written regarding two items tonight. The first item is a proposed zone classification for a one-acre lot located at 2601 West Parkwood Avenue to change from single-family residential to community shopping. Aubrey, is there a staff summary?
Yes, sir. This is a rezoning of a city-owned piece of property. This is where Fire Station 2 is currently existing on the tract, and part of the bond projects is to demo and rebuild a new fire station. The current zoning of single-family residential doesn't allow NAICS use number 922, which is justice, public order, and safety activities, which would include the fire station. So we are requesting to change that zoning to community shopping center. The current zoning is single-family. There's a neighborhood commercial property adjacent on the northern side, and then to the southern side, the church, the Harbor Church, has a specific use permit overlaid on single-family residential. And then all the notices were sent out for the public hearing tonight and for council's public hearing. Property owner notices, there was only five, and then the sign was posted on the property.
Okay, thank you. I don't know if an applicant or representative of the applicant would like to make any comments or presentation.
It's just Becky and I tonight.
Okay, that works for me. Right. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak for making these changes or this change? Okay, seeing none. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak against making this change? Okay, seeing no one, we will move to our second topic. It is a zone classification change for approximately 54.805 acres, known as Friendswood High School, described as three tracts located on 702 Greenbrier and at times noted as 800 Greenbrier Drive, also 1115 Falling Leaf Drive, 1013 Falling Leaf Drive, 1101 Falling Leaf Drive, 0 Falling Leaf Drive, and then on 1014 Mustang Drive, 1018 Mustang Drive.
1102 Mustang Drive.
Mustang Drive. To replace specific use permit 98-22 with a revised specific use permit to allow NAICS number 6111 elementary and secondary schools that will overlay all of the described properties which are zoned single-family residential. Aubrey?
Yes, sir. So part of the FISD's bond projects from 2020 include some changes to the high school The high school is existing there. It was established there in 1974, I believe. And throughout the years, the SUP has been amended, you know, buildings have been changed. We're doing an ultimate cleanup of everything with this application because parts of it have specific use permit on it, parts of it don't. We're cleaning up the plat and cleaning up the pipeline easement and finalizing that once and for all. Hopefully, we'll get everything documented with this application, but the... Do you have the slides for that? Sorry. So this is the existing campus as it is. In 2009, the auditorium was constructed, and there was also an addition to the cafeteria, like interior to the site that was done several, I think around that same timeframe. But the district has acquired over the years seven residential lots between Falling Leaf and Mustang Drive, and so that will provide them more land for expansion, for fields and things like that. The property is all zoned single-family residential. School districts, state law allows them to choose property where schools go, so we can't really tell them they can't put a school there. We require the SUP as an overlay to, you know, maybe look at screening requirements or different things to help protect, you know, adjacent uses. So the proposed site plan was in your backup material. The changes to the site include a new performing arts center, which is like a big auditorium, renovation of the existing auditorium and fine arts wing, renovation of his existing continuing ed spaces, or career in technology, sorry. New competition gym with storage and locker rooms, existing locker room renovation, and reconfiguring and adding athletic field space. There was a copy of a new site plan on your computers tonight. The only change on that site plan was the change regard, or note regarding the pipeline. We are going to require them to remove the pipeline underneath the new performing arts building before they build that building, and then 50 feet out from the building. It has to physically be removed from the ground. So I included two sections of the site plan to kind of zoom it in a little bit. This is the area where they're adding the fields and some landscaping, and then this is the portion, the dark gray areas are the gym addition and the performing arts building. I added north, south, east, and west on the performing arts building, so you can kind of, I didn't know if y'all picked up on where those elevations were because they, the north, south, east, and west was just like literally on the paper. So that kind of gives you an idea of how the elevations will face the different parts of the property. The fly loft of that building is going to be 49 feet 11 inches, which is allowed with the specific use permit with the school, with our building height ordinance changes that are going through. All the notices were sent out, newspaper, there was about 89 property owner notices that went out, and the sign was posted on the property. And I believe there are representatives of the school district here if y'all have questions.
Okay. Well, if any representatives of the applicant would like to make a short presentation at this point, I don't know if they've loaded, provided us with anything, or make any comments you can do now, or we'll bring you up later. If you could state your name, sir.
Yes, sir. I'm Eric Kreider. I'm with FISD over the Executive Director of Facilities and Construction at the district. I honestly first want to say I'm grateful for the city and the city officials that we work with on a monthly basis, and Aubrey and Becky, I mean, they've been quite a significant help through this process with us and the architects trying to get all these things sorted out from things that's occurred over time. I just wanted to be real brief tonight and let you know that I have been in contact with a couple of the homeowners that live adjacent to the property where we're going to be building the fields and the tennis courts, and I've given them my word and assured them we're going to do whatever it takes to be good storage to them as neighbors of the Friendswood School District. You know, I know there's certain things that we got to comply with, with the city and city ordinances and things like that, certain fencing, erecting, certain things like that. But, you know, we'll go above and beyond. We'll do what we have to do to take care of the neighbors surrounding us to make sure that they can still live in a nice friendly environment, that they're not going to be affected by the things going on out on that field or anywhere on that site for that matter. So I just wanted to say that, and I just appreciate the city again for all your work. And, you know, PBK here, Greg Prince, all the work of his staff in putting all this together for us. So thank you all very much.
Okay, well, this will come up in a little while in another section. If you can stay, I'm sure we will have questions for you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak for making this change? Okay. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak against making this change? And I'm going to then go through the cards. So I have a card here. I think this is the appropriate time. From Paul and Tina Han, 1011 Falling Leaf.
It's on your slide 11. So our property, my name's Tina Han. Again, I'm grateful to be able to come and speak. We do live at 1011 Falling Leaf Drive, which is directly adjacent to Practice Field 2 that's on the FISD plat that they've proposed. Our concerns are just that the soccer field is oriented so that it faces directly, the goal for this Practice Field 2 is directly adjacent to our property. And from the plans that were released on the website, we've been told by FISD personnel that it's approximately 25 feet or eight yards between the soccer field goal and the property line. And then our house sits approximately 24 feet or eight yards inside of our property line. So the distance between the goal and our property would only be about 16 yards. So the plans also indicated that they would use the screen of the trees that were currently existing as part of the screen between the soccer field and our property. We were also assured that there would need to be a fence that would be erected. The plans look like they showed that it was going to be on Mustang, but not all the way through to Falling Leaf Drive. But we've been assured that there will also be a fence with a minimum of eight feet that would be between our property and Practice Field 2. But even with that, when you want to build that fence, Mr. Kreider came out and actually looked at our property because we shared our concerns with Mr. Skarpa, and he referred us to Mr. Kreider. He came out and looked at it, and based on the trees that are currently existing, some of them would have to come out in order to erect the eight-foot fence between them. So we were still concerned that balls that were kicked from midfield are likely to go over an eight-foot fence and potentially impact our house and/or our roof and our property. So Mr. Kreider went back to the architects, and they said that they could potentially shift Practice Field 2 further back and closer to the auditorium, but even so, the maximum distance would still only be about 20 yards between the goal line and our house. So we're just concerned that if our property is negatively impacted by projectiles coming from the field, either FISD or others that just came onto the property, what would our, what would be our recourse legally or otherwise? And who would address those concerns should they come up? And again, I thank you for your time.
No, thanks very much for the comments. And if I can read this right, our next speaker, the next person that brought in a card was Eric Kreider. Ah, that's, that's what he did. Okay. So I'll give anybody else a chance at this topic, anybody else for or against this, they would like to speak. Now's the, now's the time. Next is our consent agenda. These items are considered routine or ministerial in nature and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of items unless a commissioner so requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the Planning and Zoning Regular Meeting held Thursday, August 12, 2021?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Shows to be unanimous. Okay, next are our action items. According to the Planning and Zoning Rules and Procedure R 2020-17, all action of the Commission shall be made by an affirmative vote of four or more members of the Commission present at such Commission meetings. Our first action item tonight is consideration and possible action regarding a recommendation to City Council for the requested zone classification change for the one-acre lot located at 2601 West Parkwood Avenue to change from single-family residential to community shopping center. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Aubrey, just checking, will you, any additional comments at this time?
No, sir.
Just checking. Okay. Tom, I'll start with you, Commissioner Hinckley.
Yeah, when would that, the construction, all that happen on that site?
I think they're planning on having the design done by the end of the year, so hopefully soon.
Especially with the property staying for the same use. I have no, no concerns.
Thank you. Commissioner Sasso.
Yeah, this seemed like an administrative change to get what we need to have done. I don't see any issues. The neighbors are few and far between, and so I think this is an easy one.
Commissioner Carter?
Yeah, I see this is administrative only, no issues.
Commissioner Mann?
Same. I think it's a good catch to make sure that we stay.
Okay. Commissioner Clark?
Just one quick one is, so I assume we'll see a site plan?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thanks. No comments. Thanks.
Development continues out that way. It seems to make sense to have something out there. So, nope, I have nothing else for me. So we have, unless there's further discussion, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Shows to be unanimous. Okay, our next action item is consideration and possible action regarding a recommendation to City Council on a zone classification change for approximately 54.805 acres, known as Friendswood High School, described as three tracts located on 702 and 800 Greenbrier Drive, 1115 Falling Leaf Drive, 1013 Falling Leaf Drive, 1101 Falling Leaf Drive, 0 Falling Leaf Drive, and located on residential lots on 1014 Mustang, 1018 Mustang, 1102 Mustang, and 1108 Mustang. To replace specific use permit 98-22 with a revised specific use permit to allow NAICS number 6111 elementary and secondary, secondary schools that will overlay all of the described properties which are zoned single-family residential. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
And just double checking, Aubrey, any, no, nothing else?
No, sir.
Okay. So I'll start with Commissioner Hinckley. Anything?
Yeah, you know, I do have a few things. You know, sharing on your thoughts, it's not only the proximity to your residence, but I'm also concerned with the soccer field's proximity to the road right there, too. So that is one concern that I do have. Whether that can be adjusted around, maybe the tennis courts moved and soccer, soccer and tennis relocated, I'm not sure, but those are two concerns I have right there. Another concern I do have is, has there been any consideration to put a sidewalk, sidewalk along the Falling Leaf portion?
Would you like the representative?
Yes, yeah. Please.
Good evening. I didn't fill out a card.
If you could state your name, sir.
My name's Greg Prince. I'm with PBK Architects. I'm working for the district. So as far as the question about consideration...
If you could point the microphones, just, just you could point one, one towards one of you, and yeah, you could talk.
It just helps later. Thank you. So for consideration of a sidewalk, so it hasn't been considered at this point. I don't know the, why, any reasons why it couldn't be considered if it was desired. Obviously, we want to make sure the drainage patterns work as far as the drainage along Falling Leaf, both Mustang and Falling Leaf. So if Pride, Falling Leaf, Mustang, if a sidewalk is going to be something that this committee wants us to consider, and the district would consider that, I don't see any major obstacles to that.
Yeah, I definitely would like, like it to be considered. I mean, Falling Leaf's a narrow road, and you do have a lot of people walk up and down that road, and that'd be a great addition for the neighboring residents, so if you definitely could consider that. And then, like I said, I'm not sure on the soccer field, that kind of concerns me with being that close to the road. And I know you said you're going to try to address those issues, but it's just something to think about, right?
Yes. And you are correct, and Aubrey mentioned it, or one of the speakers mentioned that we can shift that around. There is some space there. You can see there's some track and field areas that can be shifted around, rearranged to shift that field away from the property in question. Shifting it away from Falling Leaf, you know, just to be frank, will be difficult to fit the number of fields the district needs. We can easily shift it away from the property. As far as blocking balls from, you know, entering the roadway and entering the field, there are measures that we can take with the district's approval, either via use of nets, things like that. Sometimes those become more obtrusive than the stray ball, so it's kind of a, you know, there's some...
And it may not be as big of an issue as I'm seeing it, but, but just something to think about.
Yes, absolutely.
One thing I'd like to add to that, so that field that you're seeing that's on Falling Leaf, that is a non-irrigated field. So most likely, you're going to see discus and shot put done in that area right there. Not to say that other things aren't going to happen on that field, but it's a non-irrigated field. The other field that runs parallel to the properties in between the tennis courts, that would be a field that be either an irrigated field, or if budget allows for it, possibly turf in the future field. So that's where the majority, you would see soccer and football and things like that happening. So for that to be happening in that area, I'm not saying it's not going to happen, but it's most likely to occur on the field that runs parallel to that property.
Very good. Good answer. Really, my only other comment is I like the, I've looked at the landscape plan. I like all the trees that are being planted, so I'll give you that. That's really good.
We'd like to at least replace everything we're taking down and then some, so that's our goal.
That's good for me.
Commissioner Sasso.
So mimicking Dick's question, Aubrey, if we approve this tonight, we get another look at the site plan when it goes forward? Is that correct?
No, this is it.
This is it.
This is the site plan, yes.
Okay, so the site plan doesn't reflect the shift of the eight feet or that you were going to do for the plan? So if we approve it, it would be approved with amendments?
Yes.
And only what we call out?
Yes.
So we need to be careful and look at this and make sure it meets all our requirements? This is our last, last chance?
Yes.
I agree with, I was, Tom stole my thunder on the, on the sidewalk. If there's a way to put a sidewalk along there, we just spent a lot of money doing a sidewalk on the other side of the school, as you well know, and I don't know what the traffic patterns are expected to be. I'm sure they're going to shift a little bit with this extra stuff going on here, so that would be beneficial. The, on the property line, I was a little confused, and Commissioner Matranga tried to straighten me out. There is, on that drawing, I think it's the same one I've got called up in front of me when you blow it up, it says there's a black, proposed six-inch black PVC coated chain link fence.
Six foot.
Six foot, sorry. Six-foot black PVC coated chain link fence as a barrier. I take it in addition to that, there is an opaque fence?
Yes.
The opaque fence would run the distance of the property line adjacent to the neighbors. So that's the one that's called out by the city as an eight-foot wooden opaque fence.
Okay.
Or an eight-foot opaque fence.
I'm sure that's in here somewhere because Joe found it and I didn't, but it wasn't on the main drawing that I spent a lot of time on. So we have a, you have a chain link fence, you have an opaque eight-foot fence, and then you have trees past that.
And I think, to clarify, I think we replaced the chain link fence at the request of the city to an eight-foot opaque fence. I don't think that we have two fences.
Okay, so you're no longer doing the chain link fence?
Not along the property line between Falling Leaf and Mustang.
Okay.
Am I correct?
So that's another exception we need to put on the, I mean, what we're voting on is not what we're seeing, I guess, which makes me always concerned.
There is, the drawing still calls out the black PVC coated chain link fence.
Okay.
Okay.
There is a fence that actually goes around the entire site of the property, so...
So I guess if somebody kicks a ball and it keeps bouncing, does it hit a chain link fence, or does it hit an opaque fence?
It hits an opaque fence. Then on that site plan, if you look at that note on the bottom right, it does say eight-foot high opaque wood fence. So is, I don't know if there's another sheet that maybe has a conflicting note?
Well, on the, on the drawing itself, it's, on the drawing itself, when you have the barrier line, you can't, it's kind of hard to, I think it's on that one. The one I have in front of me says there's a, there's a proposed six-foot black PVC coated chain link fence.
Okay. And I apologize, that was revised.
That's fine.
Eight-foot high opaque wood. So if that needs to be a rising amendment, we can do that.
So it's going to be eight foot now, an opaque wood, and you have two of them or just one?
Just one.
Okay, so there's one eight-foot opaque fence that's replacing the six inch, six foot, it always looked like an inch to me, six-foot black PVC coated fence.
That's right.
Okay. And then there are, there are trees. Is there an illumination plan that goes with this? Are we sure that the light is not obtrusive to the neighbors?
Yes, the photometric was included in the package.
Was it? I'm sorry, I missed that, too. I got caught up on this one drawing and just, it was a big blow up, and anyway, I'm sorry.
So the lighting plan is actually for the tennis courts themselves? So the, the way the LED lights work, it's basically direct lights, where you beam those lights to, they're laser pointed.
Right.
The photometrics to that site, so you don't have that glare like you would have with metal halides, that glare off into the other neighbor's property and stuff.
So the two practice fields are not lit?
No, sir.
Okay, so they'll only be used for daytime use? Okay, is it fair to say that the band won't be practicing on the practice field?
We actually had that discussion today, sir. It may be in the future, if that field would ever be turfed, it's possible that they could use that as a practice facility, but right now, currently the way it stands, our existing soccer field that will be turned into parking in the front of the high school. I don't know if you have that slide with the overall site plan.
Yeah.
But if you look over there, where we extended the property out in front of the performing arts center, the auditorium there, that area right there is where the band would be practicing at. That would be their new practice area.
On the lower left there, or lower?
Lower right.
Lower right, okay. Lower right is, is good for the existing neighbors. Upper right is bad for the existing neighbors. If I were living there, I wouldn't want to have trombones playing at 8:00 in the morning before school, practicing. But I, I guess what you're saying is you don't plan to, but you might.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not saying it's never going to happen.
Right.
I can't say that for the school district and how they would use that property, but currently, right now, our plan is to set up band in that bottom right corner in that new parking lot, and that's where the practice will be.
That's where the band tower will be.
Yes.
Which is where you do it, where do you do it now?
It's actually in the senior lot, it's in the back parking lot, or the junior lot, it's behind the stadium.
Okay, gotcha.
On the home side.
Which is not that far, but it's a little bit further spacing.
Yeah, if you're right next door, I mean, that would be pretty, I would try to put myself in a position of each side here to see, you know, and that would be unpleasant to me, especially if you're practicing before school starts, which would be one way to get you out of bed in the morning.
Where they're going, Richard, I think there's, just this, whichever way that is, just this side of it's a little community park. There's a couple houses across the street. There's not a whole lot of houses right there next to where that parking lot's going to be.
Yeah, not where the parking lot is, but where the practice fields are, they're right next to it. That's what I'm concerned about.
That's correct.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, yeah, I, like I said, I echo the idea of a sidewalk, be very attractive on this. I don't know if we can enforce that. I guess once we, this is our last vote, so...
Well...
What we can ask is do your best effort, so...
Well, I was going to say, before you, before you got to the end of that, let's just maybe talk about sidewalks, because remember, this is, these are a state, I believe, it's SFR, but they're large homes, and there's no sidewalks on either side of Falling Leaf right now. Is that, is that correct?
That's correct, sir.
And so, again, it's back to sidewalks to nowhere, and as long as, as long as we think, okay, if you build it, they will come at some point as some few, you're shaking your head. Tell me what you're shaking your head for.
Our single-family residential lots that are open ditch do not require sidewalks. So even in our new design criteria, asphalt streets with open ditch, design does not require sidewalks. That is our only zoning, or only design that does not. And there, it's 120-foot lots.
So legally, and since these are still SFR, those apply, so legally, we cannot require them. All we can do is ask for them.
Yes.
Okay, I'm asking for what that's worth. I think it would be good for the students to have more, more chances of not being on the road, and you have potentially a lot of traffic. You know, anybody who lives down in that area would walk home, and I agree with Tom that a sidewalk would be beneficial, even if it's only part of the way. We do take what we can get on sidewalks. As someone once told me today, you got to start somewhere. You know, anybody who lives down in that area would walk home, and, and, uh, I, I think, I agree with Tom that a sidewalk would be beneficial. Even if it's only part of the way, we do, we take what we can get on sidewalks. As someone once told me today, you gotta start somewhere.
Sir, my only statement to that would be, like, we would be basically, uh, constructing an A sidewalk to nowhere, and I believe that we'll have enough grass in between where the edge of the property line is, where the fence is at, before the roadway, that if somebody wanted to walk along there, they could still walk along there as well.
They, they could, and, but there are times when we get a significant amount of rain in Friendswood, and people would be sinking into the mud, and so then they will be on the street and, and avoiding cars, and, and these are not adults, these are soon-to-be adults.
And, and it, it's not such an unreasonable request, just from the perspective of, we really do try to look at what's going on in the future, and I know the houses now don't have sidewalks, but what's it gonna be ten years from now, twenty, fifteen years from now? We try to think that through without overburdening somebody to install a sidewalk, that just makes no sense. So, you know, I guess I'll echo, take a look at it, obviously, um, as we're hearing from city staff, it's not required. But if it makes sense and you can do that, I think that adds to that area, and as it develops, because, let's just face it, this is not the last time, in my mind at least personal, that the city, the school district is gonna purchase homes in that area.
So, we did require them to add the accessible routes per the building code, and so on the site plan, there's all the little dark gray areas, it's kinda hard to see on that, but if you can pull it up in more detail on your computer, all the gray, like, dark areas are the accessible routes to get from one building to the other, or from one, like, even if it's a practice field.
I see them next to the tennis courts, but I see nothing on the north side there.
It goes down the side of the natatorium, it goes.
Oh, I see that.
It goes into the natatorium.
To get to the street.
Goes out to Falling Leaf.
Yeah, yeah. It, it gets to Falling Leaf, the question is, the concern is not the accessible route where there's few, little traffic, it's, it's the accessible route where there is significant traffic. And so, any vehicle traffic. Vehicle traffic, right, right, yeah.
One of the other things that we considered, just to talk, since you're speaking, uh, vehicular traffic right now, that we actually talked about today in our twenty-five percent construction document meeting, was adding, uh, a speed hump along Mustang and a speed hump along Pride. Right now, there's a couple of speed bumps on Pride, like the plastic type that are bolted down, but we're looking at possibly doing speed humps, which are not the speed bumps. That doesn't kill your car or break your back when you drive over it, but it still slows the traffic down through there. And the reason why we're looking at that is because sometimes that can be a blind corner around there, and if you have all that stuff going on, that traffic around that area, say you got something going on with the natatorium and tennis courts at the same time, I mean, it may be something the city would wanna look at in the future on Falling Leaf as well, outside of that area of the, uh, um, the playing field over there.
We've had people come talk to us about the traffic in that area.
Yeah.
So, I, I, what, what I'm basically saying to y'alls, uh, is that we are looking at, you know, other measures to protect the kids, protect the, the, the traffic around us, and we're always forward-thinking future as well too, I mean, that's really part of the plan. So, when you address the sidewalk thing, we're looking at things too, like, do we need to add more detention if one day we wanna turf the fo- uh, baseball and softball fields? I mean, we've gotta think like that, because it's gonna ever evolve into something in those properties over there, so, yes, sir.
I think that's smart. Yeah, I, I don't know how hard it would be to ship, yeah, I guess you'd be shifting the, the proposed practice field south a little bit, just to get more room for that. It's all how you'd have to work it out, but it would, it would be, I think, for safety purposes, especially since we just spent a lot of effort putting a sidewalk down on the other side, depending on what traffic patterns look like, that, that's all I have.
Commissioner Kerner?
Yeah, thank you, so, along the lines of what Commissioner Hinckley was talking about, I, it does concern me how close that practice field is to, I think it was Ms. Sharon's property. And so, my question is, did you consider inverting it? In other words, putting the shot put area and the proposed discus area with, on the right-hand side, and the field on the left-hand side, that way the soccer field is actually more in, internal to the overall property? And if you happen to have loose balls, it would stay internal to the property as opposed to be potentially invading her, her space, or potentially even causing property damage.
Yes, ma'am, so we did look at that, and actually, so, our site plan right now calls for eight tennis courts. Um, and that's what we have currently, and that's what we're gonna replace with, but we're always looking into the future. So, one of the wishes from the tennis coach was twelve courts, which we don't have it in the budget right now, that we approved under the bond for the taxpayers to include those twelve courts in there. So, the reason the fields are arranged the way they're arranged is due to the fact that later, for future expansion, if we wanna add four additional courts, that's why that field sets exactly where it's at. Because then it lines up with adding four additional courts in the future, and we need that space there, and that's why we can't shift that field down further, or basically turn it like you say, invert it to the other side.
So, so along those lines though, does that not then work if you inverted the entirety of that section? So, you move the tennis courts also to the right side and the other practice field to the left? A, a complete mirror image, basically, is what I'm, I'm referring to.
And that, and the orientation of the tennis courts, and the reason why it's set up the way it is, is due to parking as well. So, we're gonna add some spots, um, in the second round of this, we're gonna add some parking spots. But you have the natatorium parking that you use in the parking across the street adjacent, so, a lot of times there's, uh, competing events going on. So, when those competing events are going on, um, the parking wouldn't be available over there, so it was more of a, a parking, uh, flow type thing, uh, for the school district as far as how all that works out.
And, and you're absolutely right about the twelve courts, but one thing to, to note that you could, and we have, like we talked about earlier, that field, I don't know if it's number two or number one, but the one that's closer to Falling Leaf, it can slide plan left. And that shot put.
It can move left?
It can shift, and I believe we calculated today, and I don't wanna quote a, a number, but forty to forty-five feet additional to what's there now.
Yeah, it, it, it looks like you could probably put in another four tennis courts. It would be, it would be tight and cozy, but it would fit. I, I am worried about potential property damage, um, as well as, you know, not just impacting the one homeowner, but others as well. So, I, it's part, part of the reason I asked that question. You know, in general, guys, I'm, I am, I'm a, I've heard enough uncertainty about this, that I'm, I'm, I'm having some hesitancy about approving this this evening. Cause I think there are some other options that maybe we need to see in a plan before we approve it. So, those are my thoughts, that's what I have.
Well, since it seems to be a common thread, before I ask the other commissioners to weigh in, could you state, what are, what are you doing to prevent impacting your neighbors?
Um, so, one thing is the eight-foot wood opaque fence that's required by the city. Uh, another thing is we will, we are gonna shift that field, so the field's actually gonna shift another twenty to twenty-five feet, so it'll give it a total of forty to forty-five feet.
To the property line, or to the residence?
It'll be forty feet from.
To the property line.
To the property line.
Mm-hmm. And like I said, with the LED lights, they're, uh, laser pointed controlled photometric study to do that, so you're not gonna have the glare to those properties over there. I, I would just say, sir, that, um, ma'am, you know, we have looked at this, and looked at this, and looked at this for several months, and we've moved things around, and this is what's turned up to make the most sense to us, that works with the, uh, the flow that we're looking for at the high school. And I would say, no matter where I put, or where, wherever we move, like a tennis court to a field, you're always still gonna have that field on the other side. And I can sit here and say that I'll do everything in my power to, you know, stop something from happening, but I can't be there twenty-four seven to make sure there's not a kid out there kicking a ball or doing this, whatever. It won't be lighted at night. You know, there'll be, uh, uh, kids out there during the day, and when the kids are out there during the day, they're supervised by their, you know, soccer coaches, football coach, whomever. Um, we are gonna be the best towards that we can to our neighbors, and, you know, I've said that time and time again. And, um, I've even made it a point to actually go to one of the houses of the neighbors there, and also reached out to the other neighbor, uh, via email, so.
Okay.
Not saying we're gonna go to all lengths, but we're gonna do everything that we possibly can, but I cannot control everything, and, and I don't think anybody could ask the school district to control everything that's gonna happen on that property to the extent to where kids suffer because we can't expand or do certain things on this, uh, facility, this field.
And as far as like an overshot, kind of, I mean, soccer ball, and we could help you with that as far as how far a ball might overshoot a goal, but if we have a goal with forty-five feet to a property line with another, I'm not sure how much further it would be, but I don't want a ball to go over any fence or any property line, regardless of where the house is. But, you know, that is a, it's a, it's a significant distance, you know, just looking at other school districts and proximity of soccer fields to property lines, that would be, you know, a little bit more than we typically would have, so. I, I can't say that a kid's not gonna take a really hard kick and try to get something over a fence, obviously we can't combat against that, but just in a normal playing per period, you know, the overshot of a goal, typically you're talking about twenty to thirty feet at the most. So, for whatever that's worth.
And one other point I'd like to make too, if we did make the adjustment, like if we moved the tennis courts over there, I can tell you right now where the existing tennis courts are at right now. I have tennis balls that are on top of the high school gym, fieldhouse.
Oh, goodness.
From launches of tennis balls from the tennis court location right now. So, if you wanna talk about impacts, if we moved that tennis court over there, they would probably have a barrage of tennis balls ending up in their backyard on the roof or whatever.
And those, those are gonna be lit as well, right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I think, I think I prefer the tennis court to stay.
That's a good point, very good point.
Away from the other property line, so, my preference.
Commissioner Mann?
So, I, I, I was gonna bring that up, I think that the lights in the tennis courts and tennis balls go further, and so the more inside the property, the better. Um, I, I still don't exactly understand, uh, if you took the, the soccer field on the very top, and you flopped that over so that now the shot put and the discus was on the north side, I guess that's the north side.
North.
Yeah, if it's over there, then, and you slid the soccer field all the way to this side, I, I don't understand, is, is, why is that not doable?
That is, that is doable, that's what we're talking about.
That is. Okay, that's the forty-five feet.
No, what they wanted to do is leave that space open for a future tennis court.
Which space?
The shot put. Current shot put space. Then there'd be no shot put space, so they do it in the middle of the field. The idea of adding two tennis courts up north of the other, that adjacent to two that are already there. It would take over the shot put space.
Four more courts.
No, I'm sorry, only four, it'd be.
Four more courts.
Yeah, it's fifty percent bigger, so you'd see another, another four.
Are the additional?
Right there, right there.
Right there, you turn it sideways.
Oh, turn it sideways, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't miss that, I thought that'd be the same orientation.
Are the additional tennis courts going here?
Yes.
And you'd have them turned ninety degrees to the others?
No, it would just be another row of those.
Be another row of four, just like you see there, just four more.
Up?
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay.
So, the top right of the, the future twelve tennis courts would still abut that, that edge of that field, the first twenty, thirty yards.
The first part of that field.
So, what is the downside then, you lost me too? What is the downside of moving the prac, proposed practice field to where the shot put is located now, and putting the shot put closer to the homes? What is, why'd you do it this way? You did it for a reason, why did you do it this way versus that way? I honestly, from a track and field standpoint, I don't know that this was, I'd have to go back and talk with the coaches to see if they requested it there. I don't think it's impossible just from a site layout, obviously you can put those anywhere. Um, I believe the coaches requested it on that corner, if, if we wanna swap the two. Eric, you might know that there's something I'm not thinking of, but I don't see right now a major obstacle to the twelve courts being there in the future, and that entire field sliding over, um, and basically reversing the shot put.
Yeah, that, that's.
Um, but I might be missing something, I, I don't wanna say that that's a hundred percent, we can do that right now without talking to our sports consultant, just to make sure. But this is what's before us tonight, and this is our shot, we, we either approve it or don't. Sure. Okay, what else?
That, that was it, and also, I think Commissioner Kerner brought up a good point, there's, I think we have, we're starting to get a list of little things that are off on this that we wanna get correct before we say yes. Not that we don't like the overall idea, I do like the amount of energy that they're putting that exceeds what they have to do as a good neighbor, uh, around the borders, that, that I like. But we can maybe take it one more step, uh, since it'll be there for a long, long time.
So, we can include these items in our recommendation, um, and this still has to go to public hearing and, um, action by city council. So, if we itemize these things in our recommendation, um, then they can be considered, uh, by council.
Right.
How, how tight is your timing, if we were to delay two weeks?
We have to vote on it tonight.
We have to vote on it tonight?
Yes, council's public hearing is September thirteenth, and we have to have.
For them to see it on September thirteenth, and is that an important deadline for you?
Yes, sir, um, right now, actually, we're looking at, if the SUP were approved finally, it would be October fourth, and we got, uh, proceed on October fifth, um, that we would start construction. Now, we will do demo before that, um, we'll, we'll pull a demo per, permit and start demo the existing houses around the middle of September. But there won't be any, the, the first thing that we're doing here anyway is constructing the tennis courts, we're not even doing the fields at this time. The fields are gonna come in a later package, GMP two, but this is just the overall site plan to show you what's gonna be there. So, it could be two years before you even see this other field that's, uh, adjacent to that property right there.
Yeah, but it's the plan that's being approved now, so we have to decide that, and no matter when it happens, it, there'll be no more oversight.
But definitely, as far as deadlines, I mean, if we don't move when we're supposed to move, um, October fifth and proceed and start construction with this, it backs up our entire project to the Performing Arts Center and everything else on that property. Cause it's kinda like, it, it's gotta go in stages, and with lead times on material right now, and availability of stuff, and just, you know, with COVID pandemic going on and trying to be able to get materials, subcontractors and stuff like that, it makes it very difficult in a tight timeline when we're trying to have a Performing Arts Center built by December of next year, so.
What I would ask is if, if it's possible within your regulations, I have not heard of a, of a comment that we can't respond to within probably twenty-four to forty-eight hours with a revised plan. If you are able to approve this with your recommendations for shifting of the, uh, practice field to, to maximize the distance, and if you wanna specify that distance, you, you're welcome to, uh, I think we can easily get twenty to forty feet, but if, if that needs to be larger, based on the committee's recommendation, we can, we can look at that. There's nothing that's undoable. Right, thank you. What I'm hearing from Aubrey, at least what I, I took from city staff, is that we're gonna end up voting on this tonight to keep the current schedule, uh, moving. But with that said, we will probably, we might, and we'll see how the vote goes, but we might put some additions in there that talk about shifting, uh, swapping the practice field with the shot put to, so that it moves further away from the, the adjacent homeowners. Um, we will probably say something about the opaque fence, uh, that needs to be corrected on the drawings that were, that, black chain link, there may be others.
Sure.
But we will put that, we potentially may put that in our motion tonight to approve.
Sidewalk.
Uh, no.
Okay.
Because, I would say no, because what I heard Aubrey say was, that's not even, it's not even allowed.
It's not required?
No, it's not required.
Oh.
That doesn't mean it's not al, it, we couldn't recommend it.
Okay, okay, there you go.
Well, it's not required, the sidewalk?
Sidewalk.
Sidewalk is not required, but we can recommend it.
We, we can't insist on it, except as part of the site plan agreement, we could insist on it, just because it's a site plan.
Okay, well, we'll see what we have, what, what we have votes for.
Right.
Uh, we, we gotta go through the rest of the commissioners, but that's, that's what I'm hearing, is in then that recommendation will go to city council. And then city council can then follow our recommendation or not.
Yeah.
So, you, so you'll have your time to look into those things and correct the drawings. Yeah, right.
And one thing I would add to that too, sir, is like, uh, to me, it's more of a feel-good if we push that field down, cause that's still not to say that somebody's not out on that other portion of the field playing, kicking a ball around, and it goes over the fence as well. I mean, that's what I'm saying, you can't, whatever you do, unless you build a forty-foot wall even with that, you're not gonna stop everything happening out on that field. So, whether that field's there, whether it's forty feet down, I mean, I did as much as I could today, quickly responded to a homeowner's request. Um, I went and met with him yesterday, and I went to twenty-five percent CDs today and got the approval to adjust the field to the forty feet. That quickly went back to the homeowner and told him, hey, we're gonna make this adjustment. We're gonna have it forty feet from the property line versus the twenty feet that it was.
So, you're, you know, and I think that's commendable.
It's great.
Being, uh, cognizant of your neighbors and trying to work with them. So, you're saying even today, it's forty feet from the property line in the current orientation of the drawing? The practice field, soccer practice field is forty feet from the property line of the homeowners on Falling Leaf.
That's what it would be, sir, forty feet from the property line, the field.
And this drawing does not reflect?
Right, I, that's right, understood. Okay, I thought the forty feet, I got confused, I thought the forty feet was when we swapped them, but no, that's, it currently is forty feet.
So, we're, we're actually gonna shift that field down, and we can update drawings if we need to, to send over to Aubrey and, you know, to make sure that that package actually is the one that goes to city council.
Okay. Shot put and discus remaining where they are? We could get forty to forty-five feet. Okay, now I understand, thank you for clarifying that. Commissioner Mann? Commissioner Hinckley, did, or did you already? Yep, yep, you sure did. This is so long ago. Commissioner Clark?
Yeah, I have a.
Yeah, I have a, a couple of questions. So if the field was moved all the way to the left on this diagram, how, how far a shift is that? And of course, I understand that you've already moved it forty feet, which is not in the drawing. Just to be clear here. So what is the dimension between the Nataitorium Road and the end of the soccer field?
I would estimate that to be north of a hundred feet.
Okay.
From the back of the goal line.
So maybe another sixty-ish feet in addition would be.
If, if we were to swap.
Swap the, the purposes, okay, thanks. Um, appreciate that. Uh, question on, um, ordinances, Aubrey. Did we not pass an ordinance reflecting the requirement for sidewalks if a neighbor had a sidewalk?
We passed an exception for sidewalks if your neighbor doesn't have a sidewalk, and then you don't put one in.
Okay, so I'm thinking on the sidewalk discussion, if, if there was a sidewalk, then the next people, probably FISD, builds on the remainder of that block, you know, twenty years down the road, they wo, they wouldn't have the option.
They would then have to put sidewalk in.
Is that, am I reading that right?
Yeah, I, I, I.
That's for curb and gutter, though, the exception.
Yeah, I, I, I get, I get concerned about putting sidewalks in because you're changing the whole design of the road. It's not just putting in a sidewalk.
I understand that, but not very long ago, we, we changed the design of Greenbrier, and, um, so it's certainly a subject of, of, um, of some interest here. Um, so I th, I thought I'd just, uh, go at it from that side and see what you thought about that. What, can, can you, um, tell me, does the, does FISD own any of the, the remainder properties to the right?
No, sir.
Okay. And as far as the, the, uh, the soccer field in its current position, I, I, I'm, I'm sure, I'm, I'm not an attorney, but I think if the ball lands in your field, you can sell the ball, so you might have a windfall gain if, if it actually turned out that way. But anyway, um, thank you for your time.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And most of my comments have already been asked, but I guess let me just try to summarize at least my tho, my thoughts on it. Um, a- as Commissioner Sasson said, you know, he tries to put himself in the shoes of the adjacent homeowners, and I do the same thing as well. But I, in addition, I also try to put myself into the shoes of the developer, like, so trying to, trying to do something for the city of Friendswood, at the high school, and the students that can, can use these facilities. Uh, the bond money was approved for this, this was envisioned. Um, so I try to put myself in a lot of people's shoes, I mean, if I lived next door, what I think. Um, I wouldn't want soccer balls coming over my, my fence. I do think you've done a credible job and are working to moving, the forty feet, I think, helps. The trees will help, uh, they're sixty-five gallon live oaks. I think you, you guys did a really good job of adding trees to the site. You're taking down a lot of trees, by the way, uh, but you're adding a, a large number of trees back. Was it eighty trees, Aubrey?
I think eighty-six.
Eighty-six. Yeah, and so.
But they're replacing eighty-six.
And, and we really took a lot of efforts to save every tree we could on that site, because there's beautiful trees that, if a field doesn't have to take it out, we're not taking it out. So we're going to have a lot of remaining on that site, which is nice.
I, I look at this as a practice field, uh, it's not in constant use every single day, or games, you know, lots going on. Okay, I, I'm just saying, I just wanted to make, make that point. So looking through the rest of my, lighting, we've talked about, the lighting of the tennis court. Uh, you guys have done, looked at your boundary studies, and you're not impacting, you're meeting the guidelines for your lighting impacting your neighbors, correct? Okay, we talked about trees and the tree mitigation. Sidewalk, I'll say, not your issue, by the way, amongst the commission and, and staff, I'm still a little fuzzy on, on what we can and can't do with, with sidewalks. Uh, we are always trying to add sidewalks where we can, where it makes sense. Okay, I think I have, okay, and there's an ornamental fence along Windy Way. Sorry, not Windy Way, sorry, Falling Leaf, thank you. Uh, and then the rest is the opaque fence, but screening your neighbors and the screen, using the trees and to screen your neighbors. I'm just making sure I've got all this.
Pride and Mustang would all have ornamental fencing, and the whole Bigfoot fence would be along the property line.
Which, I think I found the discretion in that. On the site plan, it says, it's labeled as the chain link fence, but on the landscape plan.
That's correct.
Labeled as opaque.
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah, so we just need to correct that site plan.
That's what confused me, yeah, yeah.
That, that's correct. Okay, I think, I think you guys can sit down, thank you very much for.
Thank you.
For working with us and, and talking through this. So now it's going to get a little bit of sausage making, I think.
So.
And, and bear with us on that.
So do I need to amend the, uh, motion?
Well, yes, you can.
To add comments?
Yes.
With stipulations.
And I think we're going to, yes, that is correct, and you may have enough votes to pass it with all the stipulations, or only some of the stipulations, but yes. So you made the motion, so I will let you decide how you want to remake that motion. Because I, I've heard, just to help you, I mean, in order to help myself, sorry, more needed than you. Um, we have to clarify the opaque versus chain link fence. Uh, that is an opaque fence, eight-foot opaque fence, not a six-foot chain link. Uh, and that they have shifted the practice field to provide forty feet from the practice field to the property line. Uh, that's not reflected on the drawings. And then there's the, there's the question about sidewalks.
Consideration of sidewalk, yeah.
Well, it's your motion, you get to make it any way you want, but.
No.
We, we recommend the addition of a sidewalk along Falling Leaf. To protect the fourteen-year-old children walking home from school. You can leave that last part out if you want.
That's one way to do it. Okay.
But I, but I had a question, though.
Oh, oh, please.
Um, on the, um, what we're really looking at is the zone change, correct? Or what we're voting on, does that necessarily lock them into this layout?
Um, well, with your recommendations, they can make minor adjustments, like they can shift around the fields if they need to. Um, but any major changes, um, would have to come back through the process, but.
So it generally has to stay in this format?
Yes, yeah.
And this is our last kiss of the pig. Probably should say that a different way.
So, yeah, so I'd like to a, amend my, uh, motion to, uh, um. Yeah, approve of stipulate, stipulations, is that the right wording? That, uh, the fencing, uh, uh, be updated, corrected, that the, um, sidewalks be considered, and, um, uh, the field placement be, uh, be solidified.
There was much talk about switching the shot put in the field, do we want to include that to be considered, or, or?
I consider that as part of the relocation of the.
Okay, but they already have relocated it, that just, that's just a drawing update to show the extra, the forty feet.
Forty feet is a drawing.
That, that's a done deal, but they have to update the drawing. The, the part about shifting it, they haven't done, they haven't agreed to, and, and, uh, I, I heard several commissioners interested in that.
And add the, uh, add a note regarding, uh, relocation, the potential relocation of the shot put.
So it would be a consider doing that. This, this, as they said, there's a lot of work been going on, and this is probably a reason it doesn't work, and, and putting them on the spot and trying them to recite the reason, they may come back and say, oh, wait a minute, we can't do it because of something else. And, and, but so considering it is, I think, the right answer.
Consider the relocation of the shot put.
So it's consideration of sidewalk, consideration, I'm making sure I got it. Consideration of the shot put, consideration of the sidewalk, the reflection on the drawing of the fencing between the neighbors, the screening fencing between the neighbors.
Being opaque, if I ate food opaque.
Yes, right, that's, that's what I'm going by.
So if I may suggest that we say maximizing the distance? That the court, or the, that the practice field is moved to the west in order to protect the, the homeowner, I think is probably the, the way to get that consideration of moving it completely, as, as opposed to just moving it the forty feet.
Okay, consi, consider moving the soccer field.
Maximizing.
Maximum distance from the neighboring property?
Yes.
But it's still a consideration.
Potentially shifting the shot put with it, right?
Yeah, I, I would personally, if I may offer, I would say that if it doesn't move at least forty feet, then I would not agree to it. If it moves at least forty feet and consider moving it even farther, then I would consider approving it tonight.
Would we, could we address that by saying that we would, the two requirements are, one, correcting the drawing for the opaque fencing and correcting the drawing for the forty feet, that's done, then consider the sidewalk and consider.
Maximizing, yeah, the additional movement to the west.
Yes, of the soccer field.
Inclusive of moving the shot put to the other side.
Or however they do it.
However.
Sir.
That's not my motion, but yeah, I was.
Trying to help you out.
You already have? Okay. No, you. So I, I think she's saying she has it.
So you're amending your motion?
I'm amm, I'm amending the motion to include what has been documented by Ms. Becking.
So Rich seconded it before.
I, I, I seconded exactly what he said.
Okay.
Okay, I told you it was sausage making, told you.
Do you want to hear Becky recite it back to us, or are we going to put her on the spot? No, we don't want to do that? Okay.
I can.
No.
Why don't you?
I think you should.
Let's, why don't you restate it, Becky, what, no, let's, let, I want.
Becky's going, was writing it up, so.
She's recorded it.
The motion is amended to clarify the fence on the site plan is an eight-foot opaque wood fence. Clarify on the site plan the additional forty feet. And consider installing sidewalks and consider maximizing the distance to the property line with possibly swapping the fields.
With the shot put.
The shot put in the.
And I would only say on the sidewalk, consider it's on, consider sidewalks on Falling Leaf.
Right.
Yeah, I.
I know.
It's written that way, but yes.
Okay. Okay, so we have a motion, and you seconded it, correct? All in favor? Shows to be unanimous. Okay. I don't want to do that again, okay. Our final action item is consideration impossible action regarding a recommendation to city council to amend the Planning and Zoning Commission Rules of Procedure R twenty-twenty dash seventeen. Is there a motion?
No one wants to motion it because they have to do sausage, but I, I'll, I'll do it.
What, what's your motion?
A motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, Aubrey, is there a staff summary?
Um, so we covered these, uh, well, we had a draft last time, um, we did take some of the comments into consideration, um, made a few tweaks, um, basically, the main thing is, um, removing how our agenda has, like, the order of our agenda. Um, it's up to the chairman, um, to decide the order of the agenda, which will include the discussion we had last time of being able to put the public hearing and then the action item right after it. Um, and then, um, just the public comment time period would be three minutes. Um, public, well, yeah, public comment, public hearing comments would be limited to five minutes, fifteen minutes by an applicant. Um, but the chairman always has the leeway to extend that time if necessary.
Okay, and, uh, Commissioner Sasson, any questions or comments?
No, I, I looked through it, and I think, um, I think everything here is positive. I, um, I like the idea of mimicking city council and, uh, simplifying the code to where we have just one set and not have different rules. So I'm, I'm, I'm for this.
Commissioner Hinckley?
I'll echo, I echo Commissioner Sasson that, uh, I, I like how it follows along with the, uh, the city council, so it makes sense to me.
Commissioner Clark? Commissioner, man?
We had just discussed a little bit about the optics of reducing time that public could speak. Uh, I understand that we can open that up at any point, so, uh, that is good for me. I just don't know, we, we aren't as limited a time as city council is, so we, we potentially could do everything except for leave the time available for everyone to speak, um, but, or we could be liberal with allowing it, uh, as, whenever possible.
As needed, yeah. Commissioner Kerner?
I have a couple of questions, sorry, you were hoping to get through this fast, so I apologize. So I thought we had talked, um, before about clarifying the ten days, um, to be ten calendar days, because there was.
I made the change.
I did not see that change.
Oh.
Um, on six-one A, it just says ten days in the red line, I'm looking at the red line version. It, as opposed to calendar days.
It must not have gotten saved, because I made that change, so I apologize.
Okay.
I intended to make the change.
And then I have a question, probably just more for my education, why do we not allow, um, electronic media during, um, the public hearing or public comment and only paper format?
Um, that's just, um, so that, the public comment is just people bringing, like, new items or complaints or something like that to the commission. We can't exchange or have conversation with them, it's just an introduction of an item, and so we don't do, like, PowerPoints.
Well, they are required to bring paper copies.
They can, but they don't have to bring paper.
It just seems odd to me that in this day and age, we wouldn't also allow electronic media to be presented if someone is presenting paper as well, just.
No.
We, it's because we don't want unvetted electronics plugged into our equipment.
Okay, fair.
Because they just show up to the meeting, it's not scheduled ahead of time, it's not on the agenda.
Yeah, ah, okay. Um, and then, secondly, um, what ti, this is going to sound odd, but what time does city hall open on Monday morning? Because if the, um, presentations have to be received by nine AM Monday morning, are we open before nine?
We're open at seven-thirty.
Seven-thirty, so they have an hour and a half on a Monday to get everything turned in.
Later than, right?
Yeah, correct, well, I, yeah, peace, I, and, and I think it'd be before then.
And that's our, it's a submittal, that's our submittal deadline for all, um, plat and site plan applications.
Oh, that's consistent with the other ones as well, okay, great, thank you, that, those are my only questions I have, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I wanted to clarify, there is during the, during the public hearing, a citizen can provide a presentation during the public hearing, and they have a fifteen-minute, they have to meet all the rules, but in the public hearing, they can do a presentation.
An applicant, yes, yes.
Um, no, I, I, I thought I read that either one, an applicant can, and I thought also, I mean, maybe that's where I'm mistaken. I thought I read, and I, maybe I missed it, but yes, the applicant can, but then a citizen can come in and provide a presentation as well, and, and you may want me to quote chapter and verse, and I can't. During, in the public hearing section. I thought I read that both applicant as a fifteen-minute and a citizen can provide presentation.
Which, I, I mean, it's.
You're saying, no, I misread it?
I, I mean, I suppose they could, but they wouldn't, I don't know that they would know to get it to us ahead of time, so.
There, there were, I thought, okay, well, e- either way, um, I, I mean, I must have misread.
Well, it says the person, group, or applicant of the item at hand.
Right.
And then any PowerPoint presentation must be, so it's underneath that.
Okay, so it's all only specific to the applicant?
Yeah, that's specific to the applicant.
I misread it then, okay, uh, that's, that's was all the rest of my comments. So we have a, a motion and a second, uh, wait, sorry, I, I do want to make, I want to address one thing you said, Commissioner, man. Um, I am a little concerned, too, about the timing, but we have historically always allowed people to go beyond their time in, in, you know, I just worry about the times where we've had ten, fifteen people show up for, you know, that kind of topic, and if, if everybody takes five minutes and then in saying the same thing, I think it's, it's not a good use of everybody's time. So I've seen it, I won't say misuse, but I've seen the results of, but I think three, I think the, the limiting is fine, and, and we've always, I think, been consistent in allowing people to speak.
As long as we keep doing that.
Yeah. Okay, so we have a motion to approve, oh, sorry.
Um, either we need to have a motion to amend or the original motion, because I believe there's a change to add calendar days in.
Good catch, good catch.
Point one, A, ten calendar days.
Yes.
Yeah. So I, I amend my motion to approve, Tom is smirking over there, to, um, include the modification that Kathy caught of, um, the ten-day, can, changing ten days to ten calendar days. In whatever section that is that shows up.
Second.
Okay.
Okay, so we have amended motion to approve and a second. All in favor? Shows to be unanimous. Okay. Okay, next we have two discussion items tonight, with the first being the Planning Subcommittee's responses to the public comments that have been received regarding the 2021 draft future land use map. Commissioner Mann, I believe you're up for that one?
I am. So the, good evening, everybody. The Planning Subcommittee is currently updating the 2008 future land use map to align with the Friendswoods Comprehensive Plan. So we're working on fourteen years since it's been updated, and we're coming up, coming up with some good updates for it. In doing so, we decided to reach out to the public and get as much input as we could from them, help us guide with our decisions as we're going through. So the first thing I want to say is thank you so much for all the input that we got. We reached out via the website, QR code, flyers, we had town hall meetings, we were at the Concert at the Park, I jumped on that one. We did farmer's market, library, emails, and we, and it was awesome to see people giving us their feedback, their concerns and their comments. And so what we wanted to do is make sure that we addressed each of those, so that they know that we read each one, we use them as we were making decisions, and then we want to make sure that we give them that feedback as we go through it, so. Let's see here. I want to go through them quickly, but I do want to make sure that each one gets addressed. So the first one is the thirteen oh one Winding Way Future Land Use Map Classification. We had initially classified as mixed use on the future land use map. It is currently zoned single-family residence. So based off of the fam, of the public feedback that we got, we changed the proposed future land use map to reflect what, what people wanted the most and classified it as the low-density residential, so that falls in line. That being said, any development other than a residential would require a zone change. The city's zone change process through site plans would address concerns of traffic flow, access, screening, and it would have to meet the flood zone requirements, and those are some of the main concerns we had on that one. So I wanted to address that. The second one was Friendswood Lakes Boulevard Extension. The bulk of our comments on that were, where is it going to go? It shows multiple different places along the future land use map. And so with those, between five twenty-eight and twenty-three fifty-one, we saw that there were multiple avenues, and that is part of the major thoroughfare plan and not part of the future land use map. So we decided to remove the major thoroughfare plan off of that, off of the future land use map. Therefore, anytime they make a change, we would then have to update the future land use map, and it's not part of, of the future land use maps' decision matrices. However, we do use the data that we got from that classifying for where we want to put future retail nodes, where the major intersections are going to be, and specifically some comments on the Friendswood Boulevard and Falling Leaf and five twenty-eight and West Boulevard. So as we saw these intersections come via the, the major thoroughfare plan, that's where we made the decision to ma, to put on the future land use map, future retail spots. Hopefully that made sense. Number three, high-density residential classification. The, the key on the 2008 future land use map did not differentiate between a high-density and garden district homes, or gar, yeah, garden homes district. So it was a good catch by people asking us specifically near the Sterling Creek, is our apartments going here because it's, it's coded high-density? We just wanted to assure everybody that that is actually garden home, so we made new classifications and new colors on the map to be more, reflected more accurately on the future land use map. But the garden homes, we standalone, single-family homes, vice and apartment building style. Number four was the definition of mixed use, so we had some questions about that as we discussed it. The mixed use is primarily for the downtown district, but it imply, implies that there'll be a mix of commercial and residential on, in that same zoning. More green space and specific questions decline elementary once it's moved. The park's master plan uses the National Guidelines to determine the amount of park space. Currently, Friendswood has several acres of dedicated park space that we cannot develop or maintain due to budget constraints. So to add more park space would not be productive. And then specifically decline, the city of Friendswood doesn't own that property, so we're unable to, to make that park space. We wouldn't be able to develop it or maintain it. But, but importantly, there, once, if somebody decides to make that, we can help zone it that way. But as of now, we can't make that property park space. And then, and then the last one, less retail. So people want more green space and less retail. I totally get it. But the main goals of the city of Friendswood's long-range comprehensive plan is to diversify the tax base with an eighty percent residential, twenty percent commercial goal to provide our city services. And in order to meet that goal, we need to plan on retail space. And as the city of Friendswood grows, we try to, to be constructive about how it grows, and we want to make sure that we look to the future on the future land use map of where the best places would be for retail spaces. So we have to have the retail spaces, so we want to make sure that we put them in the right spots. We work hard to limit the, the retail space to logical, well-suited locations that will attract business, provide services while protecting the residential areas from the negative effects of those. And we do, and we do try really hard to make sure that we take all views into account and make the city of Friendswood the best that we can. And I do want to thank everybody for giving us those inputs to the Subcommittee, so we can make those decisions. And, and then I just want to make sure everybody got the feedback from what we had, and I want to thank you. And again, I'm extremely proud to be part of the city of Friendswood. That's it.
Thank you. Any, anything to discuss on that? Are we going to wait and let, Aubrey, you have a similar corollary subject as our next? So the next discussion item, unless somebody wants to address Commissioner Mann's comments, but thank you, good comments. The next discussion item is about finalizing the August 2021 version of the draft future land use map as prepared by the Planning Subcommittee. Aubrey?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Travis. That was an excellent summary. I did want to point out, we did, those are all the public comments that we received via the comments on the QR code. We did receive four separate emails. Two of them were regarding the Boulevard, which we already covered. One of them was regarding some multifamily development out on twenty-three fifty-one. The Subcommittee discussed that, but multifamily, adding multifamily at this time wasn't really in the scope and didn't meet the checkboxes, basically. And then one other comment was received from a property owner, and we ended up making change number nineteen on the table that was on your desktops tonight. We changed nine point eight eight acres on five twenty-eight between the Sun Meadow entrances to retail at the request of the property owner. It met all the, we discussed that at length as well. It met all the checkboxes. It fronts five at twenty-eight. You know, it's not really suitable for residential development and things like that, so. So, moving forward, we do have the final draft. We just need to get head nods from everybody tonight. If y'all find out if you have any major concerns before you take this back to City Council on September thirteenth. We are planning on doing a workshop just with the Subcommittee, with council on the thirteenth to present them, you know, our findings from the public comment. And then after that, the action would be to move forward with notifications, to do public hearing and us make a recommendation, and then public hearing by City Council and two readings of ordinance by the end of the year. Final copies of the map with notes that reference the table of changes. We ended up with twenty changes, so that was what was on your desk tonight. I just wanted to cover the last three quickly because that's the changes from the last time you saw this table. Was number eighteen was still like a question mark when we brought it to you before. And that was the commercial node along the future Friendswood Lakes, or Friendswood Parkway or Friendswood Lakes Boulevard, close to the Pearland border. So we did opt to leave that commercial node there for a future intersection. It was just an opportunity for some additional commercial acreage. And then it also mimics the design of the Parkway at five twenty-eight and the Boulevard. There would be a commercial intersection, and then down in West Ranch, there's a commercial intersection along that Boulevard as well. So like I mentioned, number nineteen, we changed that nine point eight eight acres to retail. And then number twenty was the change that Travis discussed as well, was adding the garden home development to differentiate the garden homes from high-density residential. All the high-density residential categories, low, medium, and high, allow like attached housing, you know, townhomes, duplexes, apartments, and garden home district doesn't allow that. So we thought it was important to make that clarification. So if anybody has any questions, we can try our best to answer them, but this is our draft we're presenting you.
So Aubrey, it sounds like our official vote is sometime later in the year, like October-ish?
Yes, October, beginning of October.
Okay.
Yes.
That's when we officially vote on it, but there's more working with City Council between now and then, and there may be more tweaks.
Yes.
But this is a topic we've discussed in a large number of meetings. So the only question I have, Aubrey, is, is there a specific reason that the workshop is only with the Subcommittee versus the whole Commission?
I just, Stephen and I talked about it. I asked him about having the full Commission here. He just, we felt like the Subcommittee could relay the comment, you know, the full thoughts of the Commission without having the full Commission there, so.
Okay. I, I have to officially say I disagree with that. I think, you know, it's been worked on and debated and discussed throughout the whole Commission. All of the Subcommittee has absolutely done the lion's share of the work. I think there's no, if there's no legal reason, which I don't think there is, for, I, I think the whole Commission should be invited, whether they're required to attend or not, it's up to them, but, okay, I've made my, my speech.
Sorry, and I just want to clarify, so that workshop would be different. We could have everybody there because one of the reasons we have the Subcommittee's the way we do is to not have a quorum.
Correct, but in a, but in a workshop environment, we workshop with council before. They, they will, they will all be there and they'll be under the same open meetings requirements. So in my, at least my non-legal opinion, I think legally, I think we could all be there. But that's, that's my opinion. I just note that, that I think it should be the whole of Commission because we've all been involved.
It's just a matter of posting it correctly, whatever is decided.
Yeah, but the, the City Council will all be there at the workshop, correct? Okay. Okay. Anything else on, on that?
I'll just reiterate my concern on the one piece, that thirteen oh one Winding Way. It seems like there was a lot of pushback from the neighbors, so we changed it. On the area on five twenty-eight, there was some pushback from the neighbors, but there was not as much. And so we left it at retail because we wanted retail. If I were to look at this in a vacuum and say, okay, independent of what neighbors want, somebody else to do with their property, what's the right thing to do with that property? I still think single-family residential on, on five eighteen and in that whole area is, is the wrong answer. If you were just looking at it from the future land, what do you want to do? But I think what there was, was a lot of objections, so there was a lot of noise, and you kind of bowed to the lot of noise as opposed to a little noise on the other one. I think you made the right decision on the retail on five twenty-eight. I, I think you made the wrong decision here, but I understand why you did it.
But the landowner also, we discussed it with the landowner.
And he, he said, I understand you have to do this. He, he still wants to put in commercial. He still understands that he needs to do something there, and he would have an extra barrier to overcome because we put another impediment in his, in his way. It's not a big impediment.
No, I disagree. It, it's not an impediment at all. I mean, all this is, is a, a sort of a litmus test for future development. It has nothing to do with the zoning.
But, but what?
And that change would require a zone change.
Absolutely.
Which has got a prescribed process, which we would be a part of.
Absolutely, but we have been on things where there's been zone changes, and they say, in addition, the future land map says this, so leave it alone.
Piece of data.
It's a piece of data, and it's a piece of data that then falls against what I think would be the right place for this property.
Well, I admit that it was a close call, okay, but there's a lot of factors that go into the use of that property.
But the major factor here was pushback from the neighbors.
I think that was a factor.
It was a factor. I don't think it was the factor.
What was the, what was the factor?
There are multiple factors.
What were the other multiple factors?
Flood zone, orientation of the use of the property.
Succumb to the flood zone, whether it's single-family or it's, I, I don't see that being a differentiator.
I think you have to look at the way the flood plan is and, and how you would, would execute a commercial plan in there.
Absolutely.
And, and the fact is, is that whether it's residential or whether it's commercial or some other kind of development, the site plan will be where we can figure out whether we like what it is.
Understood, and you can make that argument on every piece and change everything to single-family residential in the entire city and say, we'll change them when we need to. But we didn't. We did what we thought was the right thing for the property and, and said, independent, if you're just starting from scratch, what would you do here? You know, neglecting the ones that are already built, but if you're starting from scratch, what would you do?
The other part, that, that was being requested to be made mixed use. It's not inside, it's not inside the downtown district boundary, so we had no basis to approve a mixed-use development, like, going there, because
So once we went from changing it from single-family residence, we went to change it to mixed use.
It's not single-family residence.
It is.
Well, it's zoned single-family residence, but on the previous future land map, it was mixed use.
Special study, non, non-resident.
Special study, that's what it was, special study, right. So whatever we're putting it in, we're changing it. We're changing it to single-family.
On the land, on the future land.
On the future land use map. On the one we're talking about, right, yeah. So I, I, I'm, I'm still going to nod my head yes. I just wanted to get my two cents in.
Okay, okay, thank you. Anything else on the discussion? Okay. Our next agenda topic is consideration impossible action regarding future Planning and Zoning Commission meeting dates. Aubrey?
Our next regular meeting is Thursday, September ninth, and then Thursday, September twenty-third. Those are our two meetings in September, and then obviously the September thirteenth council meeting. If something changes with that, I'll let everybody know.
Thank you. Communications are next. Commissioners, starting with Commissioner Updates. If any Commissioners have anything that they wish to communicate, including suggestions for future agenda items, Subcommittee updates, general comments, or updates from liaison assignments. Commissioner Clark, I'll start with you.
Thanks. I attended the drainage district meeting the other day, and it was a fairly typical meeting with writing some checks to pay for a whole lot of dirt being moved out of the St. Mary's Creek area. There was a discussion about, a new, new subject to me, and I don't know if anybody's ever heard of it, but Muldoon Parkway. Ever hear of Muldoon Parkway? It's more or less halfway between five twenty-eight and five seventeen at an area which is bordering three communities, that being Alvin, League City, and Friendswood. And I didn't really understand the technicalities of it, but I wanted to put it on your radar. And I think there was a, a comment by Peggy, Rich, you know Peggy, I think, I can't think of her last name, but she's at all the, all the meetings.
Oh, right, right.
But she brought up this issue, which comes up in, in times like this, where action on a particular site could require complying with the laws of three different site, you know, or three different municipalities, which is maybe a little bit exuberant on the number of regulations that you might have to comply with. So she, she was advocating discussion and, and a streamlining of process when these kind of things happen, which is rare, but I just wanted to bring that up. That's it.
Commissioner Hinckley?
Just to mention, of course, several of you were involved in the discussion this week, but just started a little bit of talk about sidewalks and the sidewalk fund, so we'll see where that goes.
Commissioner Mann?
I don't think anybody wants to hear anymore about the future land use map tonight, so no further comments.
Commissioner Sassen?
Yeah, just echoing what Tom was saying, there's been a lot of churn about the sidewalks and the sidewalk fund. Just to summarize for the others, there is a sidewalk fund for various commercial properties that we decided that sidewalks weren't appropriate, so we, they, we have a ordinance agreement that they will put in a certain amount of money that would have cost for the sidewalk. So it's basically a net neutral, commercial decision about whether you put a sidewalk in or not. Then after ten years, they get the money back. We were looking at seeing if we could use that money and actually put sidewalks in and how close that could work. Commissioner Matrang and I walked, did.
Uh, Commissioner Matranga and I walked, uh, did, Becky gave us a list of all of the places where those worked, where those were in place. There were about eight, if I remember right, and we went and over and looked at them, and, and they could all fit. Uh, it's just a question of, do you have enough money to do it, which you probably don't. Uh, and so it would take supplementary funds, either from the city or from some other source. What we talked about, and Becky may talk about this more in her moment, that, uh, we may want to get rid of the sidewalk fund as an option and just require sidewalks with the option of P and Z having the option to say, you know, it doesn't make any sense here. And there are some places where it doesn't make sense, but in most places, uh, the argument that there's no sidewalk on either side in an undeveloped area is not a very compelling argument to me. You'd have to start somewhere. And so, uh, and, and many of the properties that we have there, uh, are in that category. So what I think we set as a plan forward, and correct me if I'm wrong Aubrey, that, uh, Aubrey was going to look and see if there was any potential text dot matching funds, since we're already coming in with some money here. Uh, and, and they have the organizational capability to do this, because they're already doing the, the sidewalk along, uh, the downtown district. So this might be a small adder to what they're trying to do. They're already mobilized, and they have sidewalk wizards putting in sidewalks and know how to do them. Um, and so, uh, we could pick out these, six of these eight properties that we thought would still work and, and say, and, and get some more sidewalks in at no cost to the city. Uh, and also potentially, uh, there's also an option that maybe the city could kick in a few bucks and, and, and I don't know what percentage of the money the sidewalk fund actually pays for, it's probably, I'm, I'm guessing half, but I have no idea what sidewalks really cost. We have about sixty or seventy thousand dollars in the sidewalk fund for all of these properties. And, and the money has to be used for that property, it's not a general pool fund, so it becomes a little complicated. But the, the, the plan is going forward, uh, there is, I, I guess I should let you talk about the ordinance that we're redoing, uh, and, and this late change to it that we're probably going to incorporate. And so that, that's all I have.
Commissioner Carter?
I just would echo, um, Richard's comments about sidewalks. I think it's important in, in our community to have areas, especially adjacent to, um, residential neighborhoods, where there are some of these c- um, community shopping districts for kids on bicycles or even adults to be able to walk to those local, um, areas, to be able to shop or visit a coffee shop, and then be able to return home on a sidewalk. And I, and I say that from experience, having tried to walk my dogs to a nearby coffee shop and having to walk along some pretty, um, I'll, I'll say hazardous roadways in order to do that. And so it would be great, I think, if we can really move out and help the community by getting some of these sidewalks that we have some funds for, get those built, and then make it a requirement on some of our new development areas as well. So, um, I'll just echo those sentiments. Thanks.
I, I have nothing further. So with that, uh, next is our council liaison update. Councilmember Hanks?
So I really have nothing.
Thank you for coming this evening.
Certainly, thanks for all of y'all's work. I really don't have anything except to remind y'all that there is a budget hearing Monday night with city council, and it's a public hearing, so you can come and talk about, you know, you'd wish that we'd add more money to the sidewalk fund, or whatever it is, but that's Monday night. And then there's the Ice Cream Social September, uh, Sunday of September that the Heritage Society and I think the FDFA, Friends of Downtown Friendswood are putting on, so Sat- Sunday afternoon at three, or Monday. Maybe it's Labor Day.
Labor Day.
Labor Day, yeah, that's it. Oh, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, next are staff updates. Aubrey?
Um, just to follow up, the Ice Cream Social is also going to have the unveiling of the new mural that's next to the, um, museum. So that's part of that event that day. Um, I think everybody's seeing the work going on, um, right here on five eighteen, um, exciting. Um, I personally didn't realize they were going to be redoing all those drive approaches, which I'm like super excited about. Uh, because all of Friendswood Drive is going to look so much better with all those new driveways. Um, but they are, so Whispering Pines to Castlewood is their first section, they'll do both sides of the street with sidewalks, and then they'll move to the next section. Um, so that project is going well, and I think that's about all I have.
And they started work on, looks like they've started work on the leisure lane traffic light?
Oh, traffic light, yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Is there possible to put a coating on those sidewalks to prevent Center Point from painting them with their little markers or having that come off?
Uh, we have an ordinance that they're to use chalk paint on those.
How's that working for us?
Um, I mean, it's, chalk paint is not.
No, I'm, I'm not disagreeing, that's a good thing to do. Are they actually doing it?
Yes.
Are they? Good, okay. Because I've been walking along five twenty eight and this.
For a little while, because it, I mean, if it rains the day after you do markings, I mean, that chalk paint still has to stay a little bit, but it's not as permanent as some of the others, but yes.
Is that everywhere or just downtown?
Um, I think just downtown. Is it everywhere? I'm not sure.
Because I've been walking on five twenty eight, and there's indelible paint there that they have been putting out just last week. Uh, I mean, I'm pretty sure that's not chalk paint.
I'd have to check with engineering, it might just be in downtown on the pavers, I'm not sure.
Okay.
Becky?
Uh, just to follow up on what the subcommittee was talking about, uh, we recently rewrote the subdivision ordinance. Uh, we are missing one tiny piece of it, and then it'll be done, but the thought is, since that sidewalk fund is a part of the subdivision ordinance, this is a perfect time to go in there and make a change, if we're going to make a change. Uh, the, the burden on the city to attempt to put these sidewalks in after the fact, especially years later, you start taking in inflation and just, it, it is a nightmare. Um, and since the commission is so passionate about sidewalks, the easy answer is to have the developer put it in when they do their development. Um, the ones that the commission has pushed back against, they have figured out a way to put the sidewalks in, so it probably is going to be the best in the long run. But, uh, once that is one hundred percent done, it'll come back to y'all. You've already seen it a couple of times without that sidewalk piece, uh, public hearing, and then go to council.
Great, thank you. Anything else?
No, sir.
Mary Kay, anything? Okay, well, thanks everybody for staying with us. Uh, the August twenty six, twenty twenty one planning and zoning regular meeting is now adjourned. Thank you very much for coming.